Friday.
Councilman, just to make sure, is the price tag a sticking point? Or is it more, just to make sure we're not buying something that's contamination that we can't really build on? I mean, do we need the appraisal? Is that gonna change?
I don't think it was ever.
I don't know if we need that.
Not the time you were born.
Yeah.
I don't think it was ever one there.
You know, our history with Ann Street, our history with the North Palm, it would just, it would just be nice if somebody went back, by the street with parking lot number one, and going, ah, down there in the bottom left-hand corner.
Take a look at what's underneath this.
You know, there was, because I'm gonna be honest with you, I say this with all due respect to the elders and the forefathers, we have bought some stuff that's down that belonged to other people that was, was a better deal for them than all of Manhattan for a song, and what was underneath of it, and what was, what kept the baggage that came along with it? That's all, that's all the only reason I would ask.
I don't think it was. I really don't. The only gas station that I can remember is the one that is now Billy's taxicage.
Yeah, we can, we can do some deep, we can, we can look at property. We've looked at.
Because I wasn't born until nineteen seventy.
Just a couple years ago. Exactly the same age.
Councilman, I mean, since with the exercise, our goal is to acquire additional properties along that, instead of having this conversation multiple times, with what's underneath, we could kind of take a look at that whole block.
And that was the old Campbell's.
I think that.
That was the Campbell's warehouse.
Right, it was, it was. So we can just say, hey, what has been here? Are we running into issues now or potentially later? I think we can look at that and, and then push this two weeks from now, and then we can present if there's any additional stuff so you can see like the master plan.
Contamination.
Does that work for everybody?
Because they just stored, they just stored stuff there.
So we'll put this on.
June fourth.
June fourth, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
June fourth meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you, Tom. I'll be back. We know you will.
Next up, we have Mr. Tall and Mr. Hopps.
Good evening, counsel.
How are you doing this evening?
Well, thank you. What's before counsel is a discussion on reallocation of bond funds to fully allocate revenue and resources to the back driveway project for station number sixteen, approved in the CIP. Money approved in FY eighteen for that. Unfortunately, the, the estimates received heretofore, prior, prior to getting the real estimates were inadequate. So the, the total project was funded at forty thousand dollars based on a request of department, at the time, it was Public Works Department, an estimate based on our negotiated concrete prices with our current contracted vendor. And that's how the original price was, or the original costs were, were allocated. Since then, as you know, the Department of Public Works is divided now, field ops and engineering and, you know, so infrastructure development, Mr. Will White, I believe is his name, had, came and said, here, we need your, we, we asked for his help to help us finish the design phase and find out the cost allocations. And he came out and said, there's no way this gets done for forty, it's more like sixty.
Sixty seven.
Sixty seven thousand dollars. So we made the, made the administration aware of that right away. And a decision was made that we would postpone the project till near the fiscal end, fiscal year end, to see if the fire department's budget could absorb the additional overage of, of cost allocations. We did that. And through procurement, we went out for bids. Those bids came in, Chief Tall, will you give us the range of bids, please?
Between a hundred and thirty-three thousand to seventy-seven thousand.
And there's some small contingency in there as well for upgrades to the underlayment if needed. But at this point, we're asking counsel to, to help us by reallocating certain bond funds that the Department of Finance has found for reallocation for this project that would allow us to go ahead and award the bid for, for the low bid of seventy-seven and change.
So you already have thirty-seven?
Forty.
We have forty.
Forty, so you need thirty-seven.
Yes.
Can I ask, one of the mayors is not here, just in terms of simple, you know, a, a change, a change order.
Budget transfer?
Yeah, some of that's blacked out there in my memory.
Yeah, our, our initial request was to do a budget transfer from currently FY eighteen allocated funds. The finance director has, has determined that the best course of action would be to, there are some projects as listed in the budget amendment. There are several projects that have surplus funds, and they're bonded for capital expenditure anyway. That would be a simp, it would, the best way to do it would be to reallocate.
This, and I don't know, does this close out these three bond?
Bond pools?
These, well, the recycle dump truck and bicycle master plan. So let me.
I would say so, if it's.
No, it's Keith, we find him from, you know, nineteen ninety-nine.
Yeah, he wouldn't use multiple accounts unless he would be able to close those out. If we had a pool more from, we'd have less accounts. So I, I've looked at.
I guess my question is, is knowing what it, what it, what we have to do with Lindsay Raider and the bond people, does this forty thousand dollars, does it, it might be easier for him to zero out his checkbook in three different other places as he would like to, because I'm sure he would, because that's Keith.
Right.
He likes to have it. But I'm just wondering if it's, if it's in the end less expensive to just do a budget transfer through, through your, your salary savings, which, which you have.
Chief Tall, you want to address it?
Keith had reached out to Lindsay.
Uh huh.
And she said this is perfectly fine for what we're doing in this bond pool.
It, it's our understanding.
It is, because she gets work.
Yeah, but it's, it's, but it's our understanding based on financial policies, and again, you're speaking to the fire chief, not the director of finance. It's, it's our understanding that the desire to, you, you made reference, councilman, to multiple years of, of surplus bonds that are out there. This is from FY eighteen bond issuance, and this cleans up more adequately, cleans up a single year so that doesn't run into multiple years of having bond proceeds left out there. That's the goal.
The only question I would have from my colleagues is, if this, is whatever way we get to the number that you need is fine, is that how were we twenty-nine thousand dollars off on the, on the recycle truck? I'm at the CB and five off on the dump and three thousand off on the master plan. But when somebody gave you how much the dump truck was gonna cost and we put it into the budget, how, how were they? I mean, and Keith may go, hey, we got a point oh-five ring difference, and that may make, you know what I mean? I, I don't know, I'm just, in years past, councils dealt incredibly into the minutia of each one of these lines. But I would, Mike, if Keith were here, I'd say Keith, what, what was the twenty, what was the twenty-eight thousand dollars?
I mean, he's.
He's probably.
He's scheduled to be here, well, no, he's scheduled to be here at five fifteen, so we can, if you wanna save that question.
Put the lights down and lie in wait for him.
Yeah, I mean, could, usually he's pretty punctual, so I imagine he'll be here in a couple minutes.
I just remember being on the other side of the table and the questions would have been, I mean, some days, you know, it would have cost.
If you had not the good news that we actually were under budget by twenty-eight thousand.
I mean, could they have called that day and there was a twenty-five percent discount?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I, I think if we want to ask him those questions, we're, you're ready to move on with this, I can hear you guys there.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with doing this, but if we want to ask, you know, just that question on, on the recycle truck when he comes up, if, if he knows the answer.
I just want Jack to be proud of me when he gets back from the study that I asked.
I'm happy to reach out to Keith and get the answers to your questions.
Okay, well, then, I, I think we're fine. We're, we're fine with this, and.
I was hoping for Jack would be here, so you'd go, I had the exact same question.
He, he may have had that question. So I guess we're, we're all, we're all okay with this. And I guess Tuesday evening, is it okay to, it's good for Tuesday evening?
Yeah, we kind of, we kind of have a tight deadline for second reading.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, we could also look at second reading as a special session on the following Monday. Is everybody okay?
It's up to council.
Keith, next time we go to get something paid, will not go to this particular person again that is off by?
Well, I, I would assume that, I assume the answer is yes, but, but keep, but keep in mind that, you know, the, the difference between negotiating, or not negotiating, but setting a price on a previously agreed to contract price for concrete with a vendor that's under contract with the city is different than going out on the open market and getting other vendors to, to approve it. So, so it's the only, it's the only thing I would, I would say to them.
We're good.
Thank you.
Good. So we'll do, we'll do it Tuesday night, first reading, and then second reading, get the work session on the following Monday.
That's, that's up to council.
That'll expedite.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look for it on the agenda, and we'll be here with bells on.
All right.
Thank you, councilman.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Councilman, I think we have some clarity on the recycle truck. So the original desire for the recycle truck was that it operate from both sides of the truck. We opted to go with the recycle truck that only operated from one side of the recycle truck, causing a decrease in costs.
Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Corddry.
Andy's gonna be, Andy's gonna be representing Keith.
Oh.
Yeah, but actually, I'm gonna try my best.
Where are your glasses?
So, there's two things. We have Keith Corddry and Mike Moles. So, speaking with Mike, the memo, the, the purpose for the memo, we got this request from Jack to present additional information. The information would have been going through the same PowerPoint that was, was going through already. But the main part of the memo was to explain that the fee schedules, because of the timeline with the budget process that's get approved, is to keep it as is and have a separate conversation about the capacity fees into a separate ordinance if we're going to change that whole process, which he's outlined, what his recommendations would be. I can take back additional questions to either of the gentlemen. One thing I will note, Michael Moles has put in his resignation, as of May thirtieth, he will no longer be with the City of Salisbury. He's moving on to a different position, and we wish him the best of luck. I know, so if you want to get those into me, I can, I can ask one question.
This, this.
Well, yeah.
The answer to a different question.
Then, this, this is what we asked at the budget session. The budget session, we said, are the numbers that are reflected in this budget, they reflect what you're recommending we change things to. Keith said, yes, the budget has the numbers for the eight thousand, not the three thousand five hundred and thirty-three. Then this, and this, I don't know if this is semantics, right, it's my recommendation, recommendation that the fee schedule not reflect the change in the capacity fee. And then down at the bottom, he makes the recommendation for two new capacity fees. So my question was, because I don't know if I can back up. I wanted to know how much Keith thought, or when they were putting the budget together, not sure why I'm talking about. If we did a moratorium almost two years ago, then we got eighteen new houses, how are they expecting any money to come in if we go from zero, which is basically what it was, to almost eight grand? And I'm not saying I support or do not support the changes. I'm just, I was trying to figure out what I asked Jack, was, I was hoping that the mayor would be able to tell us, A, why the big change from zero all the way back up to eight thousand? B, how much money did they think that was gonna generate? Because I, I couldn't in my head think it would generate any if zero only got us eighteen.
Yeah.
And then I, my question was, reading this, we'd have to vote on a new ordinance. How does that switch the entire budget around if we are doing, if it's based on the old numbers, which, you know, it's based on the new numbers? But Keith and Mike are recommending that we use the old numbers and then do the new numbers by ordinance.
Down, down the line.
Down the line.
Yes.
And to be perfectly honest with you, I'm.
So I understand that, I mean, by reading this, you know, part of this change, and I don't know if part of the change is the fact that they are, where they say they're abolishing the central system line fee, and if they're just taking, getting rid of that, getting rid of that fee and then rolling that into the other two, I don't, is that what?
What was it that Keith called the new, the new calculation process? What was that called?
That hybrid.
Catchy little.
Yeah.
The co-op thing, or the?
Hybrid.
The, the new.
It was a something based. Need base, you remember that from the budget? I don't, I don't remember. So let me just, right now, it's still the old three-five-three-three. But Keith has the numbers plugged into the budget for the plus eight thousand.
I can check that.
Well, I think it's more on that fee list. I don't really.
Well, no, the fee list still has it, it's three-five-hundred-three, because Jack sent that to me.
It was a week and a half ago.
Yeah.
Yep.
And it was, it was the fee schedule and everything from, you know.
So this recommendation has come since then. The request for, Mike's recommendation was made the day we were sitting in there and you and Jack requested that.
Okay.
The numbers have been adjusted in the budget to reflect this with.
Is that.
The memo.
Okay, so, all right, then the, the question is, how much money did, did, did you believe that the new fee would generate? Which you already noted that, because that wasn't, that was what was plugged into the budget. And my question would be, how could it be anything but zero?
I mean, the, well, these fees, yeah, exactly, because these fees are only anticipated if there's construction.
I had also asked if we could ask the Chamber of Commerce or somebody from industry. We had people from industry come and tell us they wanted it to be zero.
Yeah, so there's, there's the actual fee for the capacity rate, and then there's the option to waiver, waive or reduce charging or collecting that capacity fee. So there is what the new rate would be if you didn't waive it, and that's part of the ordinance piece, is what formula you use. And then a secondary conversation where it can be done at the same time is, do you continue with moratoriums or waivers for capacity fee, whether residential or commercial, and that, but it would use a different formula would be.
So it doesn't hurt us to leave it at three-five-three-three, but it would if Keith were here with his spreadsheet, his big, you know, monster IBM computer, if, if he were to put back in three-five-three-three and hit send, or in the little box up top like he does that goes into italics, what does that do, you know, to, to, to what we saw on the budget? That was, those were just my questions. I mean, we could, we're gonna end up, we're gonna end up taking a vote on changing it separately off of the site.
Right.
Okay, well, I can go now.
So we just want to make sure that the, the budget reflects the, the current fee schedule, if there are no changes. And if there is a, if the budget file that you have is not that, we'll make sure you see what that looks like ahead of budget session.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the, is Andy again, on the.
It's Andy slash Tom show, and Bill's show, so I'm gonna let them take the hot seats, because they came and stayed.
So I'll, I'll start this off with some humor. I told the chief that I was gonna try to work heretofore into the conversation, and he wished me luck, so technically, I've already done that. So I win. We didn't have a wager per se. Okay, so I just want to give you some background. What we have before you is a, a bu, budget amendment for an amount of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for electricity for street lighting. Of the thirty-five hundred and seventy streetlights in the City of Salisbury, twenty-one hundred and thirty of them are provided by Delmarva Power. They charge a monthly pole, fixture, rental and maintenance fee. Those fees range from ten dollars and seven cents per month to forty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents per month. The average monthly cost is forty-seven or less, forty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Forty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars per month. Okay, thank you. Rates charged are specified in the Delmarva tariff, and they are approved by the Maryland Public Service Commission. Annual budget projections for electricity are typically done in November, December and January. In November of twenty sixteen, as we were planning for FY seventeen, or, in, actually in FY seventeen, planning for FY eighteen, the rates were the same as they were the previous year, so last, last year, we were planning for FY eighteen. On April fifth of twenty seventeen, the Maryland Public Service Commission filed Order eight-eight-zero-three-three and approved a rate increase based on the Delmarva rate case number nine-four-two-four. It would take effect May of twenty seventeen, so when we were in, getting ready to get into FY eighteen, this change took place and the budget was practically already done at that time. No notices were issued by Delmarva Power. In May of twenty seventeen, city staff noticed a twenty-four point seven percent increase in electricity rates for streetlights compared to the previous month. We investigated this and found out that the rates had in fact changed based on the aforementioned case, and the new rates were now twelve dollars and sixty-five cents per month to fifty-two dollars and forty-seven cents per month, or an average increase of eleven, eleven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars per month. That totals a hundred and thirty-eight thousand six hundred dollars in increase for FY eighteen. This was unknown to us during the planning process. The increase was a change in law and affected all customers, so there was really nothing we could do about it. City utility budgets maintain a projection to allow ten percent variance, that was provided. Richard Anderson noted when I talked with him that over the past ten years, the overall utility budget has not exceeded the approved amount, approved amount, so this is the first time. We waited, we being field operations, waited to bring this to council because we were hoping to realize some surplus or savings somewhere along the way, whether it be from salaries or tipping fees or what have you, so we could try to move funds into this account to cover the shortfall. The bottom line is, we simply don't have it. So the request today is a budget amendment in the amount of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to be used from surplus to get us through the end of the fiscal year.
Did we budget for this FY nineteen?
I'm working with Mr. Corddry now to make sure that was done. I can't say for sure, as I sit here today, that we're right on that, but we'll figure it out.
Any idea with Delmarva Power, how many, the percentage of lights that are LED?
If I can interject, Delmarva Power does, in the state of Maryland at this point, does not provide a tariff rate for LED lights. Therefore, they've not changed any. The LED conversion was done with city-owned lights, so we have noticed a discount in that effect. But with the Delmarva Power lights, which are the twenty-one-thirty, they do not provide any.
Is there anything that we can do to mandate LED lights on city streetlights, or are we not allowed to do that?
We are, okay. We, through the guaranteed energy savings contract that we're negotiating, go through that process, what you'll have seen from Honeywell, that's part of the recommendation, is to switch over most of our streetlights, if not all of them, to LED.
Well, I'm talking about, the issue's been with Delmarva Power.
We've, yeah, we can't mandate them, but we've been trying to purchase or acquire more of their lights so that we can control our own, our own electric costs. And Bill, I don't know if you want to speak to that, if you.
Yeah, the lights that are giving us difficulty are ones that are on poles. By poles, I mean wooden poles. They will not give us, it's a residual income for them that they do not want to give up under any circumstance. Now, we have two subject matters with city lights. We have lights that are metered with a city meter that we pay the electric bill, just like a resident does. And we have, that our forefathers negotiated, where we have city lights that are on a Delmarva Power meter, that not owned by the city. So we're in the process of converting some of those lights over to actual city metered lights. One of those examples is Eastern Shore Drive. Eastern Shore Drive has a grant to convert the entire street to LED. Problem being, that was within the gray area where it was a city pole, a city light, but we paid Delmarva Power the tariff, which is the smaller tariff you see on that thing. So our goal is to convert them to all city meters, all city LED.
And I knew there had been some, go ahead, Mr.
No, I was gonna say, every year, the legislature tries to get the municipalities the power to take back their streetlights, and every year, the Delmarva Power and the electric company lobbies beat it back, time and time again. Many of MML mayor's associating meeting I sat in, when one mayor would stand up and say, the electricity companies are going down into, into the state senate, we've got to get down there right now. So this is, my question is the electricity consultant, and I think Mr. Heath put here, was here, he'd go, you know, Jim, I was gonna ask the exact same question about that, because it comes down to the amount on the waste water treatment plant, it comes down to those huge spreadsheets that Keith has that are in point oh-five font, that, you know, we keep trying to save and save and save, and then this happens. And my question is, why did the electricity consultant not know this was gonna happen? I mean, I mean, seriously, that's, that is, that's, I, I love a good ribbon cutting, but this is the stuff that lives up here. And it, it's, especially when these two gentlemen know. My biggest pet peeve for six straight years is, I can't get them to turn it on when it's off and broken, and they charge you anyway, Delmarva Power. Even if it's off, you get charged. So I, I'm not sure, I mean, if this was, I guess maybe we were all reading, you know, the thing that pops up on our phone that says Delmarva Power asks for, you know, a sixteen percent, or maybe it was Blue Cross Blue Shield, but that was a different work session, meeting that I recall. There's no way you can't pay this, but it would be helpful from the administration side and from this side if somebody says something about this, even if we said something about it now, because a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars is three secretaries, it's two police officers after, after, you know, all of, you know, benefits and, and insurance and things of that nature. And we, you know, it's gonna come out of surplus, if I'm correct, just out of general surplus.
General fund surplus.
And that marked out my question, should mine too say a decrease of current year surplus? On line nineteen, it says increase for operations and increase current year surplus should be decreased.
It's always been very confusing to me, but it's increase on both sides.
Could it increase your deficit? No, never mind.
Okay, that's fine. And my question, you, Tom, when we first started, you said before it was between ten and forty-one, and the average was eighty-seven, and that was?
Yes, sir, that was prior to the April fifth, twenty seventeen, decision to increase the rates. And then, and then it went up to.
My question is, if the high was ten and the, the low was ten and the high was forty-one, how could the average be forty-seven?
Forty-seven thousand.
The cost was forty-seven thousand.
It's forty-seven thousand.
At, at that rate, it was forty-seven three seventy-five per month. The new rate is the eleven thousand five hundred and fifty dollar increase.
Eleven thousand.
So it's forty-seven plus the eleven thousand.
Yes.
And I can understand, in the legislature and with all of our delegates and stuff that fought for yours, that highway needs are funds were more important, but this is also, this stuff adds up.
This is, I'm gonna, I'm.
This is, I'm going to, I'm president-elect of ESAM fish here. In the next two years, this is one of the issues that's going to...
It's the glamorous work here about a...
This is, this is one of the issues that we're going to be focusing on. So, I've been talking to a couple other people and this is something that's come up too. So, we're, at least from the Eastern Shore side, we're going to push it and then hopefully influence MML.
And one thing that is nice, I know we've mentioned briefly, is being able to get a grant. There's money available for us to buy back some of these poles and try to reduce this kind of moving forward. And Amanda, I'm and her team has been able to secure that. So, with Eastern Shore Drive and then future projects, if, you know, we're going to continue aggressively going after opportunities to be able to convert these over to in-house, so we can eliminate these tariffs. And this is ridiculous and stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. So, we'll put this on for Monday evening. Everybody, I mean, we don't really have a, kind of pay electric bills, so...
No, that, and there implies the frustration part, is that when people who are elected to office in the room, said he had to say out loud into a microphone in public, well, there's nothing we can do. I just find that to be, you know, because I feel the same way, but it just, it seems...
It's frustrating, I mean, you...
Should we write a letter to the legislature? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Sorry about all that. Really? Hundred, it's a two hundred and five thousand dollar day for you?
Let me get out of here.
He can touch us instead, it's going to take a couple more days.
We sent Tom to ask for a month of day. Usually, it's, well, usually, it's somebody else.
He got a cheaper recycle truck.
Any other discussion, any other issues anybody wants to bring up?
Does anybody smell anything of the, you know, like some film, some paint or something? I do.
Perfect round and write to the Maryland Public Service Commission.
Any public comments? Thank you for attending, Mrs. Chante, we appreciate your being here. With that, we are adjourned.